All right, welcome everybody this Wednesday, February 17th to our regularly scheduled planning board meeting. First up on our agenda is a roll call. I see we have David Thompson, we have Krista Schwitzer, we have Lisa Buck, we got Mike Costello. I believe John Beckett will be joining us. I think that covers it, myself Phil Rock. So next up on our agenda is acceptance of the agenda, can I get a motion?
I move that we accept the agenda.
Thanks Mike, can I have a second?
Second.
Very good, thank you Dave. Next up approval of the minutes of our December 16th 2020 meeting, can I get a motion for that please?
I move we approve the minutes.
Thank you Krista, can I have a second?
Second the motion.
Very good, thanks Dave, discussion. I looked very quickly, but I didn't get to spend enough time on this, so anybody have any edits? Corrections, comments?
I think it's another very good set of minutes.
Yeah, I thought they were excellent, I wasn't there and it really helped me understand what happened.
That's great, Jessica awesome job. Any edits? Wow, man you're rocking Jessica, so that's great, so we have a motion, a second and. All right, I guess this one we'll take a. We'll take a roll call if you would Jessica.
Do we need to do one for the agenda as well?
I noticed that, let's, can we do, let's do the agenda and then, well, can we do both at once and save all that time?
Everyone else alright with that?
Yeah, because I missed that, let's do both at once, if you have any issues, you better differentiate, but let's just go for. For two acceptances with this, one swoop by Jessica, please.
For the approval of the minutes and the agenda, Krista Schwitzer?
Approve.
Dave Thompson?
Approve.
Phil Rock? Lisa Buck?
I will approve the agenda, but I would like to abstain from the minutes because I wasn't there.
Thank you Lisa.
And Michael Costello?
Over both.
So that's five four for the approval of the agenda and four with one abstaining for the approval of the minutes.
That is a quorum, correct? I know we're missing members, but that covers us, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Awesome, so next up old business, there is none, so we're gonna move right on to new business. Tonight we have a public hearing, it's an amended subdivision by Forest Orno Associates LLP. For the Forest Hollow subdivision located on Grant Road in the low-density residential district. To recreate lot six from the originally approved subdivision, which had previously been combined with other lots. On the east side of Grant Road, I do believe we have the applicant with us this evening. So Mr. Benson, could you please give us a summary of what you propose this evening?
Yes, I had under, unsubdivided much of the property in 2018. And last year I resubdivided two lots, number seven and thirteen. And now I would like to recreate lot number six. It's gonna go in the exact same place as the one before, same dimensions, same everything and.
Very good, Mr. Benson, we're losing you, so in order to keep things moving. Moving, we're gonna ask Kyle to give us a summary to the planning board members, he provided us. As usual, great work on the summary of the project, so Kyle, I'm gonna pass it over to you, because that connection is gonna be difficult.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Benson mentioned beforehand that his interconnect connection was a little off.
This should be pretty simple, so.
Yep, so just as he was saying, there was the approved subdivision originally happened in 2006. In 2018, there was some combining of some of the lots into two larger pieces of retained land on either side of Grant Road. This past summer in June, Mr. Benson came forward to. Kind of reinstitute two of the lots on the left side as he was ready to sell. And now lot six on the east side, he'd like to go through that same process, it's recreating the lot. Yeah, exactly as it was originally approved. And due to the fact that no standards in the ordinance have really changed that would impact this since the original subdivision. There really isn't too much to look at, it still meets all of the minimum dimensional requirements for a lot in the low-density district. And all of the other, you know, conditions of the original plan approval are still in place and unaffected.
Very good, this is pretty simple. So I am going to, I'll ask the board if they have any questions to Mr. Benson first before we do open up the public hearing. Any questions from the board?
I don't have any, we've been, we've been here a couple of times.
Right, I do have a question regarding that, because what it appears, and I haven't really seen this during my time on the planning board, but. With this particular project, it appears that the lots were combined and then. My take on this is that perhaps depending on market conditions, every time there's interest in a lot. Mr. Benson might be coming back before us. Do you anticipate that that's gonna play out in the future, Kyle? Because we've, this comes, as Mike said, you know, seen this several times now and fairly simplified, but it's.
Yeah, so I lost you for a second there Phil, but I think I got the gist of what you were saying. So, yeah, I. I really don't, it's a simple review process, because you know, we're just amending the subdivision back to how it was. Originally approved, so there's not much to look at when a situation like this comes up. However, you know, it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, from state law, that, you know, an amendment to a subdivision. It's an amendment, you know, to the subdivision and any amendment to that has to go back before the planning board. So I don't really see at this point a way of, you know, getting around that kind of procedural aspect of it. As quick of a review as it might be.
Right, it just, this does not seem typical that you start out with a subdivision and then market conditions. Lump all the lots back in together and then it appears and now every, every time there's an interest in a new lot. Perhaps it'll be coming before us, it's not typical, I haven't really seen that, but I just was curious. Because that seems to be what's happening, so.
Yeah, I think that's.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh. Um. Well, when I did seven and thirteen last year. It was to have more lots. And now I have a customer for lot six. And that's why I'm trying to, you know, break it up.
Yeah, I'm only getting about, of what you're saying, Mr. Benson, and yeah. I think we understand the gist, I would just curious if that's the approach. Again, you're very difficult to hear, so I think we're just gonna. Just keep on.
You're freezing now.
The pen on the chair.
Your picture is freezing. I had, I had combined the lots in 2018. Because I only had two sales in the first 12 years. The taxes were $20,000 a year. So I did the tax appeal to try to get the taxes lowered and I failed. So that's why I combined the lots in order to reduce the taxes. Now it seems that the market has come back a little bit and I'm getting many customers. I have a customer for lot seven also that I'm working on, but that's the one that broke out last year. But it is a function of finding customers and having, I have three or four lots available. The person for lot six, I have lot fours available, it's been available for years. But the man who. Who wants to buy lots. He bought lot four, he wanted lot six.
That's why. Thank you, Mr. Benson, it's difficult to get all of, all of what you're telling us, but I think we get the gist.
Should I call?
I did open up the public hearing, Jessica, do we have any people online that cared to weigh in? Any, any questions from, from the board for Mr. Benson? What is it?
No, I apologize, I was having trouble getting to my mute button, apparently internet troubles are rife this evening. But no, public chat is empty.
Any, any questions from the board, relatively simple, I'm hoping that we don't have to see this application, you know. Quite frequently moving forward this project, quite frequently moving forward, so. But the item in front of us is to consider his request. So nothing Jessica, I'm gonna close the public hearing unless you tell me different. All right, closing my public hearing, last call for comments, wait just a minute, Mr. Benson, please. Let, any, any further comments from the board? Very good, this evening, we do have our proposed findings of fact that Kyle prepared for us. I'm gonna read those into the record and we're just gonna, we're gonna go through all of them and I'm gonna ask you. For the thumbs up, thumbs down at the end of. My reading of these findings, everybody okay with that? All right, these are proposed findings of fact for the Forest Hollow subdivision, amended subdivision review dated February 17th, 2021. Pursuant to Article 7, Section 18-210 subdivision review of the Orno Code of Ordinances. The Orno Planning Board has considered the application of Donald Benson to amend the Forest Hollow subdivision. Originally approved in July 2006 and amended in February 2018. And June 2020 by recreating lot six as it was depicted on the 2006 original subdivision plan. The property is located in the low-density residential district on Grant Road and based on all evidence presented by the applicant. Reviewing agencies and town departments and the public, the planning board found the following, number one, lots that the proposed amendment will recreate lot six. As it was approved by the planning board in the 2006 subdivision review from the retained land area on the east side of Grant Road. Further, that lot six meets the minimum dimensional requirements of the low-density residential district. Further, that any future subdivision of the retained land which constitutes. The creation of subdivision lots will be subject to land use ordinance standards in effect at the time of the subdivision. Number two drainage improvements, the amended subdivision plan does not alter the previously designated and approved protective. Protected runoff drainage buffers that are part of the approved stormwater management plan. Number three, open space wildlife habitat wetlands and recreational land. That the amended subdivision plan does not alter the previously designated and approved significant wildlife habitat buffer. Vegetated buffers on lots one and two in the recreational path easement. And lastly, number four, overall finding as to the other elements of the Forest Hollow subdivision that recreating lot six. From the original 2006 subdivision plan will not affect any previous findings leading to the original approval. Of the Forest Hollow subdivision and will not adversely affect any element of the original approval, including standards for sewer. Water utilities, pollution control, stormwater management and drainage improvements. Roadway and traffic circulation or financial and technical capacity. Further, that all other findings of the planning board with respect to this development at its meeting of July 19th, 2006. Are unchanged and remain in place. Can I see a thumbs up is, are everybody, is everybody okay with numbers one through four in these proposed findings? All right, very good, thank you very much, I do believe we are ready for a motion if somebody's prepared to. Offer that. Don't be bashful.
I move that we accept the amended subdivision by Forest Orno Associates LLP. For the Forest House subdivision located on Grant Road in the low-density residential district to recreate lot number six. From the originally approved subdivision, which had previously been combined with other lots on the east side of Grant Road.
Thank you Lisa, can you also add the recommendations?
You want me to say tech map number nine, lot 10?
The three conditions on the planning report. Need to get added to the motion.
Three recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as I can find them, I will have them. Here they are. And I also want to include that all findings of the planning board with respect to this development at its meeting of July 19th, 2006. And all conditions of approval and requirements pertaining thereto are unchanged and remain in place. That the applicant be granted an approved site location of development law, land use permit for the amended plan by the main department. Of environmental protection and provide evidence of such approval to the town. And that the signed amended subdivision plan to include conditions of approval that run with the property. Property be recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of approval of the amended plan.
Good, thank you Lisa. We have a motion, can I have a second?
I can second it if you need.
Yeah, thank you Mike. Further discussion. All right, seeing none, Jessica, can you read the roll, please?
For the approval of the Forest Hollow application, Krista Schwitzer?
You did.
Yeah.
All right, approve.
Michael Costello?
I approve.
Dave Thompson? Phil Rock? And Lisa Buck?
Approve.
That's five four.
Very good, thank you Jessica, thank you Mr. Benson. All right. Have a good evening, next up we have discussion, we have one item this evening, it's a preliminary discussion on the concept. Of the village residential overlay district and medium-density residential district, minimum lot size and frontage. Reduction and Kyle also provided a summary of this topic, this is something that's gonna, apparently gonna come before us. In our March meeting, but he wanted to give us a little teaser of what we're gonna be talking about in a month. So Kyle, can you summarize this, please?
Yeah, so I prepared a presentation to go over this. This is something that we've been going over in the council comprehensive plan committee. It's, you know, we've had an ongoing list of the remaining pieces of policy that need to be implemented from the comprehensive plan. And these were two of the big ones remaining and they both kind of supported a lot of the same goals in the comp plan. You know, we decided to look at them together as kind of a more of a comprehensive, you know, amendment to the zoning and kind of the in-town area. So because it's a pretty. You know, it's a fairly big change and it's not so much driven by the, the language in the ordinance like some other amendments, it's more. Of a concept, I wanted to kind of prepare a presentation since we kind of just missed. Being able to bring this for a public hearing this month with the notice, so to make the conversation. More informed and go smoother next month when we do have the public hearing, figured I could give a presentation this month. So I will share my screen and try to move through this. All right, can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
All right. So the comprehensive plan. It identified a couple, you know, issue opportunity items in the land use section. That talked about assuring, you know, in-town zoning, you know, create the opportunity for affordable homeownership. Specifically for families with school-aged children, there is a concern about. Student housing taking up some of the available housing stock in residential neighborhoods. And there is a concern about. You know, the lot sizes being of a size that didn't allow for a ton of new. Sort of infill development, you know, new lots to go in and things like that. Also, it wanted to focus on creating opportunities for this homeownership, close to services, jobs. You know, the downtown area, while at the same time not really changing the character or the feel of those existing neighborhoods, so. Didn't want to propose turning the medium-density residential district from, you know, a neighborhood or from a, you know, a feel that's. Single-family and two-family homes to allowing, you know, lots of multifamily, but it wanted to kind of find that balance of creating more opportunities. So two of the recommendations that came out of it were this village residential overlay district and. Just across the board in the medium-density residential district. A slight reduction to the minimum lot size and minimum frontage requirements. So I'll talk about the MDR district lot size and frontage reduction first, just because it's a simpler thing. So, you know, we talk a lot in our, the planning board reports about minimum lot size and, you know, frontage and whether lots, you know, meet that requirement, but. To kind of give an overview of where those numbers come from. You know, you would implement a minimum lot size, you know, especially in a residential district. To preserve some aspect of rural living, you know. If you, when you're getting into communities outside of the city, you want to have some element of privacy or nature. You know, less noise, things like that, you want to create that kind of neighborhood feel. You know, another reason for setting a minimum would be, you know, making sure you have enough space for things like septic systems, you know, the state. Has standards for the sizes of lots with those sorts of systems that need to be met. But there are some, you know, negatives that come along with those sorts of things as a community starts to grow and wants, you know, more. Development, so when you talk about wanting a walkable community and you want access to public transportation and. A lot of that revolves around focusing your development. Around the kind of downtown area where, and that would be considered your, your kind of growth area in town. But when you have larger lot sizes in that area, it can kind of spread things out because you can't fit as many lots in the same space, so therefore. There's fewer available homes, which in turn, you know, raises the price of land. Lowers the amount of housing opportunities and it creates more auto-centric environment, so. That's kind of why we're looking at what we're looking at. So currently in our medium-density districts, which is our primary residential district in town. The minimum lot size for lots with public water and sewer is 20,000 square feet. And that's what we're looking at changing here, it's only lots with access to public water and sewer. If you have well or septic or both. This change is not looking at adjusting those, this is specifically. For the public utility lots, but that's the majority of lots in the MDR. So the 20,000 number that we have now most likely came from the state law. That requires at least 20,000 square feet of lots area. For lots with a septic system. But as we're talking about, you know, lots with public water and sewer, it's not as much of an issue. And then, you know, our frontage requirement right now in the MDR for those lots is 100 feet. So if you look at the slide here. You can see kind of a breakdown of how many lots are in each kind of square footage range of lot area. So you can see everything. A pointer, so these four columns here are all lots under 20,000 square feet. So if you look at the median average lot size or median lot size in the MDR. It's under 17,000 square feet, so your average lot in our MDR district is actually not conforming to our. Standards in our ordinance. So you know, about half the lots in the, in the MDR are considered non-conforming. Which, you know, a non-conforming lot is still buildable, but you can't do quite as much with it, you can't. You know, it makes it harder if you're, you know, if you want to create a two-family home instead of a single-family home or you want to put it in addition on your house, like all of that becomes. More difficult when your law is non-conforming. So this is sort of kind of visually representing that last slide, so on this left image here, it's kind of the whole. MDR, you know, this would be the interstate over here. You know, this is the downtown area. So you can see a lot of the, the blue are lots over 20,000 square feet, so there's some really big undeveloped. You know, lots in the MDR, but when you get into the neighborhoods, you know, the images on the right side here, you know, this is. Sailor neighborhood and, you know, here you have Webster and around the village commercial up forest and Bennet. When you get into those neighborhoods, you start getting a lot of lots in that. Under 20,000 square foot range, so you can really see that the neighborhoods aren't just lots. You know, 20,000 square feet and above, it's a mixture of all these different things. So the proposal in the comp plan was to, across the board for lots with public water and sewer in the MDR. Reduce the minimum lot size to 15,000 square feet and reduce the frontage requirement to 80 feet. So this was meant to more accurately represent what was actually on the ground right now in the town. Without changing the feel so much. So. You know, you'd reduce these lot size and frontage requirements for all of these lots to better match existing conditions. It would also create, you know, a little more flexibility for property owners, you know. For instance, two-family homes, right, you know, in the MDR you need, you need 15,000 square or 20,000 square feet, sorry, for a lot. But if you want a two-family home, a duplex on that lot, you would need 40,000 square feet. You know, that's a pretty, you know, you now have an acre lot in what's supposed to be the kind of growth area of town. So this would allow, you know, a reduction there down to 30,000 square feet, you know, you could have a two-family dwelling anywhere in the MDR. It would allow for subdividing at a slightly higher density. But at the same time, in general, in the district, it would be the same primary feel, you'd still have. You'd still have largely single family housing with some two families, but no multifamily. So that one's a pretty, I think, simple change. It's not too much of a drastic difference from where we are currently. The, the next part is a little more detailed. It's the village residential overlay district. So an overlay district is different than what we were just talking about. You know, I'm sure, you know, the board has gone through different overlays in the past implementing them. We have the, the main street office overlay, the Stillwater Ave overlay. You know, an overlay is a zone that applies additional standards or conditions on top of the base zoning district. So you could have the base zone of the M, you know, medium density residential district. But you could have an overlay zone over part of the M D R district. And that would be the village residential in this case. And in some cases, these overlay districts can be optional. So if you fall within the boundaries, you can choose to participate if you want. You know, it's usually incentive based of some sort. But if you don't want to take part in whatever the overlay is offering, you don't have to and you can operate. Exactly how you currently do under the standards of the base zoning district. So for instance, you know, one overlay district that wouldn't be optional is something like the aquifer protection overlay. This is, you know, specific for environmental reasons and has standards in place. So if you propose any use in that area. That might make more of an impact on those resources, you have to go by those standards. There's no way around it. But the Stillwater Avenue overlay, for instance, is more of an incentive. To promote some small scale businesses along Stillwater Ave in what would otherwise be a residential area. So this village residential overlay would be the optional type of overlay. So the purpose is to create smaller, more affordable lots as an option in the medium density residential district. That. Are specifically within close proximity to existing town services and utilities. While also, you know, still maintaining that kind of residential neighborhood feel, you know, having. Smaller lots out where the subdivision we were just talking about. On the other side of the interstate in Stillwater doesn't make as much sense out there because. You know, when you think about walkability, you need things to walk to. So that's why you want to focus this sort of thing around the downtown area. Where you have access to public transportation and some services and businesses, things like that. So it's meant to create more housing opportunities. Smaller lots, you know, with smaller homes could lead to more affordable housing opportunities. Beyond creating entirely new lots, it can allow for the conversion of existing single family homes to two family homes. So like we were talking about with the M D R lot size reduction, except this would be. A lot easier and would could potentially apply to more people. And it's meant to kind of build on our existing walkability, bikeability, public transportation. All the in town services and infrastructure that are already there. So this is a rough draft of what the, the zoning map would look like in the area that the village residential. District would entail. So the yellow is our existing M D R district. The yellow represents the M D R. This kind of pink. Marking over the M D R would be where the overlay goes. So. You know, kind of down Main Street. You know, through Westwood and Spencer, up Forest Ave, up Benick Road a little into the Webster neighborhood, around the village commercial. And these boundaries are, were set. During the comprehensive plan process. So there was neighborhood input at that time. And in the public outreach that we've done up to now. We haven't really heard any comments about adjusting this in any way. So we kind of went with what was proposed in the comprehensive plan. So how it works is that if you are on one of these lots in the M D R district. You know, and you have access to, to public utilities on your lot. You have the option to qualify for a density bonus. So a much smaller minimum lot size and frontage requirement. If, you know, the key here is looking at this fourth bullet. If you put a deed restriction on the property. That requires the dwelling unit be owner occupied. And this is the kind of give and take incentive aspect of it. You know, like I was saying at the beginning. A big concern in the comp plan was, you know, this idea of creating housing opportunities. For owner occupants and families and things like that, not just. Creating new housing opportunities only to be used exclusively for rental properties. It really wanted to focus on creating more opportunities for people to, to live in this area. So by requiring a deed restriction. To require the property be owner occupied, that's what it's aimed at doing. So this increased density would potentially allow for new lots to be created or some conversions of existing lots. So the dimensions that are proposed, you know, we just went over what the, the current dimensions are in the M D R district. The minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. In the overlay district, if you made this, you know, you put this deed restriction on your property saying, you know, it was going to be owner occupied. You were going to live, you know, on the property, actually, you could, sorry about that. You could reduce your lot area to 7,500 square feet. So that would be the amount you would need to create a legal lot in the district. Now your minimum lot area per dwelling unit would then be 5,000 square feet. So like I said before, right now in the M D R, you need 20,000 square feet to create a lot. But if you wanted to put a two family home on that lot with two dwelling units. You would need 40,000 square feet because you need 20,000 per dwelling unit. So, but in this case, in the overlay. You could create a two family dwelling with 10,000 square feet. Because 10,000 square feet would meet the minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet. But it would also meet this minimum lot area per dwelling unit. And the minimum street frontage would be reduced from that 100 feet to 60 feet. The setback requirements would be the same as the existing M D R. So if we look at some existing, you know, kind of examples in the M D R. You can see that there are on the left here, we have Middle Street. There are a number of lots here with frontages between 60 and 70 feet right now. There are lots ranging from 5,700 square feet to, you know, just under 9,000 square feet on this street. So like we were talking about before with, there are already being a lot of these legally nonconforming lots in the district. The village residential overlay isn't proposing something that's completely new. You know, a lot of examples of lots like this already exists in the M D R. So it's just giving the opportunity to, to create some more of that. You know, and then on the right here, we have Myrtle Street, which has kind of a wide range. Of lot sizes ranging from, you know, 4,000 square feet to two acres. So with the overlay district that's optional. You know, this is sort of the, the sort of thing you might get, you know, one person might be interested in taking advantage of it. And the next three people might not be interested at all. You know, that deed restriction aspect of it is a significant. Consideration that someone would have to make because you're basically saying that. That property needs to be owner occupied. So if you were, you know, ever considering selling your, your property. You know, if you weren't able to revert your property back to meeting the, the regular M D R standards. Then you would have to sell it as an owner occupied property. So, you know, we've talked about that a lot at the council level. That's really something that, you know, would come down to the, you know, the person in the situation. And their kind of circumstances, whether they think that's something worthwhile. So some other standards for development in this overlay district, aside from the, the deed restriction, we talked about that a little. Would mention just also with the, the owner occupancy restriction. That is similar to our existing standards for accessory dwelling units. So, you know, we accessory dwelling units or, you know, in-law apartments, those sorts of things. You know, the property owner needs to sign an agreement and record it at the registry, saying that their property is owner occupied. So there is some precedent for that sort of thing already happening in town. In addition. There would be a maximum of two unrelated people allowed in the unit. Right now in the M D R district, you can have three unrelated people. You know, if a unit was owner occupied, that means you could maybe rent one room in your house out. Or if you had a two family home where you lived in one unit and you rented out the second unit, that would be allowed under the overlay district. But instead of being able to rent that second unit out to three unrelated people, you would only be able to rent it to two unrelated people. And again, that was kind of a balance the comp plan was looking at of creating more. Owner occupied housing opportunities, but not gearing it so much towards student rentals in particular. And finally, you know, we looked at changing the minimum parking requirements a little bit. You know, the whole point of this overlay district is to promote walkability and, you know, alternative methods of transportation. Closer to the downtown area. Our current parking requirements require any new dwelling unit to have three parking spaces. So in the area that we're talking about here, that seemed pretty extreme. So the ordinance language is going to, you know, propose. You know, you know, a lower amount required where you just need one parking space. If your unit was zero or one bedrooms and two spaces if it was two or more bedrooms. So just looking at a kind of overhead example of a block in town. Of how this might be implemented. So, you know, I don't think this is something that would be used by every single person. That it would be available to, like I said, it's going to come down to not only the desires of. The person who owns the lot, but it's also going to come down to. The size of their existing lot as well as the layout of the existing lot. So you might have a 20,000 square foot lot in the M D R. But if your house and structures are situated on that lot in a way. That doesn't allow it to be divided into two, you know, 10,000 square foot lots. This overlay isn't going to help. So it's not something that can be used everywhere, but there are situations where it would be useful. For instance, these. Corner lots in particular where they have access. They have frontage on two streets would be a great opportunity. For a potential division of a lot. So this lot here is, you know, almost 29,000 square feet. You could potentially divide this lot in half where the existing home would have frontage on this street. And this new lot would have frontage on this street. Both lots would be over the 7,500 square feet. You know, so that would be a, a new housing opportunity that wouldn't exist without the overlay. The other very useful option and potentially, I think, more easily. Used option of this would be something like this, you know. If you have a 20,000 square foot lot, you might not be able to divide it and create a new lot and build another home there. But you could turn this existing single family home into a two family home easily. And in that case, it would be very easy to convert back when you were looking to sell if you wanted to. Because you're not making any actual division on the lot. You're simply designating the existing structure as a duplex instead of a single family home. So if you wanted to then sell the property later on and you didn't want that deed restriction there anymore. You could just reclassify the home as a single family home. And kind of get rid of that deed restriction and, you know, sell it, you know, without needing it worrying. Needing to worry about it being owner occupied. So those are just a couple of examples of, you know, kind of the functional aspect of how it would be used. So in summary, the comp plan had these two recommendations. Aimed at accomplishing similar goals of creating some more affordable. Lots and housing opportunities, creating additional housing opportunities around our existing infrastructure in town. But at the same time, taking into consideration the existing feel and character of our neighborhoods and not wanting to. Step, you know, so far beyond that, that there are big changes there. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen. So yeah, next time we'll have, be ready to have the public hearing with the actual ordinance language. And we can go over things in more detail, but I just thought that would be maybe helpful background. Going into that meeting.
Question process Kyle. I'm assuming with a public hearing, are you going to give that same presentation at our next meeting for the public as well?
So I wasn't planning on giving the presentation, certainly give a recap of everything in the ordinance language. But at this point. We've done fairly extensive public outreach on this, aside from having multiple. Committee meetings at the council level, we did. Specific presentations with outreach. Just town staff, you know, making the presentations, posting them on the Facebook, inviting people to come and learn about it. And we had, you know, a few people show up to those meetings. So I, I think from a, a concept standpoint, we've, we've gotten it out there for feedback ahead of time. Where a complete start from scratch isn't really necessary.
Good, good answer. Yeah, questions for Kyle? Obviously this is going to come up again. Lisa, do I see your hand go up?
Let's imagine that someone has a lot that they, they divide and put a second home on. So they're not going to be able to occupy both those homes. So what happens in that situation?
The second lot would be for someone else, really. I mean, they would probably be selling it to. Like if, imagine you had some. Extra land on your property that you weren't really using for any reason. And you thought, well, this is a, you know, I'm not using this space anyway. You know, this could be a way for me to make some extra money by selling a piece of my land that right now I can't sell. Because I'd be creating an illegal lot if I sold it now. But through the overlay. You would create this lot, you'd put the deed restriction that it had to be owner occupied. But then you'd probably be selling it to someone else to actually occupy the lot. So it most likely wouldn't be for you to have both. Unless you were doing it for a family member or something like that, maybe.
What would, what would keep someone from buying if they don't want a neighbor when their neighbor puts another lot up for sale, part of their lot up? Could they just buy that lot themselves and not build on it? Just because they don't want to have another house that close? It doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, I guess they, I guess someone could just buy it and not develop. Yeah, I mean, I guess they, I guess someone could just buy it and not develop it. And in that case, it would end up looking just like what our our normal standards now require, you know, where that area couldn't be developed now anyway. But yeah, I mean, someone could do that that now, I suppose, if there was an undeveloped lot in a residential neighborhood. And, you know, maybe people enjoyed that being undeveloped. Yeah, they could just purchase it and not do anything with it. But I mean, I guess that would be up to, you know, the person selling the property. You know, if they were selling it to a neighbor, you know, they could probably have that discussion. But I guess technically, yeah, it would be possible.
Right, and some of these lots that are so small, are you going, what are we going to do with these side frontage? Back and side dimension requirements? You know, 10 feet on both sides on a 50 foot lot or whatever it was, doesn't leave much to build on. Doesn't make sense to put a garage in, whatever.
Right, so yeah, the setback standards would be the same. So it would be 20 feet in the front and the rear and 10 feet on the sides. Yeah, you might not have a lot of, you know, I mean, that would give you, you know, the minimum frontage requirement was 60 feet, which is, you know, similar to our existing frontage requirements in the Village Commercial district. So yeah, it might be a different type of person or a different type of development on the lot where they focus more on going back more than side to side. But yeah, the the setbacks would remain the same. So even if the lot was smaller, you'd still be getting that same distance from the lot lines with any structure.
Other questions or comments?
I don't want to labor this, but is is there any way for Anna butter to say, no, I don't agree with that? Part of the lot being sold because when they purchased their house, they thought they had that much space between them and their neighbors?
No, I I don't think so. I mean, the town, yeah, I mean zoning ordinances and lot dimensions can be changed. You know, I mean, they have to go through this process to to change them. And that's where I think public input would be considered if, you know, if if everyone in that situation where, you know, they were abutting lots with undeveloped space and they said, you know, we don't want there to be smaller lot sizes available to people, then their place for that input would be through the, you know, the meetings we've already had, but, you know, mainly the public hearings with the planning board and the the council when it's going through that that change. After that, and once it's adopted, if you own the property, then you are, you know, you would be allowed to to do it. And, you know, if you're creating a legal lot, then, and it, you know, meets all the conditions of the ordinance, then in a butter wouldn't be able to to prevent that.
As Kyle mentioned, this is a balance. And I do recall the the numbers of meetings we had during the development of the the recent comp plan. There was an awful lot of discussion about affordable housing and how we can do a better job in town. And I think overwhelmingly, there was support for some of these ideas, the smaller lot size that would allow more flexibility. But good point, Mike, I mean, you're not going to keep everybody happy all all the time. So this this was an item, again, that old comp plan process, a lot of public involvement and enough people weighed in. So this seemed to be quite a key issue as we were developing that. And clearly, this this proposal reflects what we talked about.
I think I remember when Evan went over the the statistics on what is available now, the the type of housing and in demand and lacking in this town is what we're talking about. This this is really something that needs to be enacted.
Yeah, so I know. Sorry, I was just going to, you know, follow up that, yeah, the comp plan, it talks about, you know, there was a lot of housing at the time, you know, being put into subdivisions. You know, in the the less dense parts of town and the low density residential district. But there weren't a ton of new subdivisions or her new lots being developed in town. So yeah, I think that was, this was really, this along with our existing clustered development standards were really aimed at creating some more of those opportunities.
Yeah, I think that one of the criteria was, or considerations was walkability. We wanted more small, affordable lot housing that were walkable to school and downtown and so on, the facilities, not have to be busing people in from
Right.
outer, outer Forest Avenue or wherever.
I was looking to at the map, there was an awful lot of red lots in your color coded scheme. Kyle, the, when we looked at that, there is an awful lot that are, don't even meet the standards. So I'm curious as to
Oh, then, yeah.
whether this proposal would would bring a lot of those legally non-conforming lots into legally conforming.
Yep, yeah, that was, that was there, that was certainly another consideration.
Yeah, there was an awful lot of reds, the Webster neighborhood where I live. There was a lot of red in that that section of town as well as the sailor development. I was looking at that, there was an awful lot of red, small, smaller lots that don't don't meet the current standard.
Right, and I think that was, you know, when we were talking about these dimensions, the 7,500 square feet. And, you know, I think it was looking at some of those neighborhoods and saying, there are lots with these dimensions existing in these neighborhoods and people seem fond of these neighborhoods in a lot of cases. So promoting that sort of, that scale of development seems like an acceptable thing for for most people. Okay.
Very good. Thanks, Kyle. Any any final questions? We're going to obviously have another opportunity to talk about this next month. All right, well, stay tuned, stay tuned for that in March. So last item on our agenda is adjournment. I do want to ask you, Kyle, so what other things are untapped for for future meetings? It sounds like, obviously, in March, we're going to be talking about this again. Are there other items on our agenda for next month?
So I don't have anything official in yet for March. But just in general, there are a lot of things, I think, being worked on that would require planning board review, whether it's a couple contract and conditional zone changes. As, you know, there's also a couple, I think, change of use projects that are changing to a use that would require site plan review. Also, the, I think something important for the the board, I guess, to keep in mind is that March 9th is the municipal election. And so we'll be having the the townwide vote on whether or not the marijuana businesses will be allowed in town. So that has already, that ordinance language went through the planning board previously. And then it went through the council public hearing as well. And the council, instead of voting on that, decided to put it, whether or not it would be adopted up to a townwide vote. So after that vote happens, you know, if the town does decide to opt in to allow those sorts of businesses, that could potentially open up more projects in the coming months.
All right then, so and also another question, any interest on board vacancies? We've had some empty chairs, well, not not for our Zoom meetings, but when when we do meet in in person, we've had some empty chairs for a while. Any interest? Beating down the door.
Yeah, I have not heard much. I know we just put language out in the Observer. That's either just went out or is going out next. So yeah, I we're we're putting it out there, but have not heard too much. So if anyone knows, anyone interested, feel free to let them know.
All right, so I'm just questioning, it sounds like March, this would not be, if we proceed with this public hearing, I'd prefer not to have the the one, one item agenda. If there's other things that, you know, make it worth the the board's time to get together, that that would be be helpful if we can make progress.
Yeah, I know, I think most of the the board members would remember the the Vernal Pools kind of program tool that we implemented into the ordinance where a project could potentially impact a Vernal Pool area in town and, you know, conserve more area in the rural part of town. Aram Calhoun, who've, you know, we've been working with kind of on that, you know, tool this, you know, for a while now. She wanted at some point to kind of give an update presentation to the planning board on where we are since, you know, that's something that if it is utilized, the planning board would be the the entity that, you know, would be looking at that. So as we've kind of been moving on with kind of reaching out to people in the rural area who might be interested, property owners with Vernal Pools to be protected and, you know, she was considering or looking to make a a presentation to the board at some point. So if we have a light agenda, that could be something that we look at too, just to kind of refresh the board on.
You're talking about the same program.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, again, if you can give us a couple items, if we are going to meet, I'd prefer not just to have one item on an agenda so that we can make progress and make meetings worthwhile.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you. One other item, we have adjournment ahead of us.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Jessica.
I just, I missed the motion. I think somebody's audio skipped. Who was that?
Lisa grabbed it.
Okay, so for adjournment of the February meeting, Krista Swenser?
Prove.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Dave Thompson?
Well, we've only been meeting for an hour and a few minutes. Is that, is that enough?
We can say a chat a little bit, Dave. Go, Rock?
Approved.
Lisa Buck?
Yes, please.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Kyle, thanks for that presentation and I guess we'll see you folks in a month.
Right.
Have a good evening.